I think we all are. You think I gotta start here?
I'm seeing.
Today.
How are you?
No way.
That's okay. Thank you.
I love that he's.
Oh, I told them, yes. They just, they had nailed that this last year. I've been working hard. I'm on the tail end from her because I saw. Second round of the event.
Sixty, seventy.
It will take me long.
I came to.
Oh, two or three minutes is better though.
I'm into the wall. This is my elevator speech. I'm in Toastmaster. You don't do like.
Powerful. Again, I use Toastmaster to be sure I'm trying to be precise and tell you. I turn around. It's in the bar. And you both, but you both are doing it. You both have to say this.
Oh, you're not.
It is. I think.
So it was about, we joked about like one day.
I think a lot of people wouldn't know. People think. We do not. Well, she's very fair. I mean, I'm fair. She's talking like you're. And my mom is. My mom's.
And we're not embarrassed.
Oh, okay, yeah. She's nine two, so is dad. She's two seven.
But I did get some.
It is. Just get some pressure for three hours. For the. Good seeing you.
I will be there. For sure. Almost at the step.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order for January ninth, two thousand twenty four. Our first meeting of the year. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Musgrove, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have an invocation for us this evening. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide them peacefully through debate. Remind them that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of the community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, next up is proclamations and presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you. Mr. Skolik.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Councilmember Sennella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
I'm here. First meeting of the year. A little rusty. Okay, if the council could please join me out in front, that'd be great. So January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So we have Therese Cisneros Remington. If you could please join us up here. And I'll let you talk a little bit about what's coming up on Thursday, but I'm going to read this first. So the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Human Trafficking Prevention Month, January of two twenty, two thousand twenty four. Whereas human trafficking erodes personal dignity and destroys the moral fabric of society. Each day in cities, suburbs, rural areas, and tribal lands, people of every age, gender, race, religion, and nationality are devastated by this grave offense. Whereas national, during National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we refer, we reaffirm our unwavering commitment to eradicate this horrific injustice. Whereas human trafficking is often a hidden crime that has no boundaries. Through force, fraud, coercion, and sexual exploitation of minors, traffickers rob countless individuals of both their dignity and their freedom. They splinter families and threaten the safety of all of our communities. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, hereby proclaim January twenty twenty four as Human Trafficking Prevention Month and call upon the community to recognize our vital roles in ending all forms of modern slavery and to observe this month with programs and activities aimed at ending and preventing all forms of human trafficking. If you could come up, Therese, and tell us a little bit about what's happening Thursday at One Safe Place here in San Marcos. I'll give this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Jones. This is my ninth annual. I'm a volunteer. I have a small business. And I also worked twenty-one years at Palomar College, and my heart is on education. So education is powerful, impactful. And my ninth annual will be at One Safe Place here in San Marcos, which just opened up a year and a half ago. And we have a camp, I have a campaign that says you can stop human trafficking.us where small businesses and community leaders and folks in general can post a community resource page on their homepage. And the first five hotline numbers are for human trafficking. Because if students and young women, young girls, find that the support comes from the community, then that's how you stamp it out. You have to educate every second and every opportunity. If you're available on Thursday from four to seven at One Safe Place, come on over. I'd like to see your smiling face. Thank you. Thank you so much.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you so much.
Okay, next order of business is the consent calendar. We do have one change. We do have a corrected version that will be on our website for the approval of minutes on number two. Does any, do any council members have any items they wish to pull? For consideration or discussion? No? Oh, Mrs. Peak, did you have something to say?
And just to clarify, the corrected version is for December the nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
To approve tonight's consent calendar.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to oral communications. I do not see any speaker slips. Do we have any? Sorry. We'll wait just one second before we move on to that. No, no problem. Thank you so much. Okay, we have three speakers? Okay. Oh, okay, great, thank you. We have three speakers, starting out with Robert Federico, followed by Lynn McGraw, and then Marlene Walder will be after that. So Robert, if you could come on down, please. Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant to do that, and I always forget. Yes, just pull it right over. It'll go right over to you.
Thank you. I addressed this chamber last spring about the intersection of San Liel Hills and Schoolhouse Way. I live on Schoolhouse Way. I was referred to the Traffic Division by this council to speak to the Traffic Division specifically about this, the problem of safety at that intersection. Since it's a big downhill slope going through there, and there's schoolchildren, there's school, two schools there, and a playground. After the meeting with the Traffic Division, I came back to them with some information on speed-activated red lights. They use them in Europe. It's, it's a growing phenomenon. You speed down the road, you're going to stop at the red light. And to, just to encapsulate it very shortly. The Traffic Division, after I provided them the information about these speed-activated red lights, said it would require the council to approve spending, and they would have to do a review, approve a study on it. I'm requesting that this council does that, approaches the Traffic Division to at least do a study on a speed-activated red light at the corner of San Liel Hills and Schoolhouse Way. Physically, it can be done. I was in construction all my life. There's, it's a matter of digging a trench and obviously buying the equipment. I provided the information. I printed it all out and gave it to the Traffic Division. I hope they still have it. I don't know if they do, but I'm requesting that this council at least approach the Traffic Division and at least look into this study to, into a study to do this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is not an agendized item, but we will direct staff to look into everything and get back to you.
Yeah, it's, it's a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next speaker is Lynn McGrew, followed by Marlene Walder.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the board. We've seemed to be having a real problem with the senior park that we live in. It's getting into a giant transition as far as like people buying in at San Marcos Mobile Home Estates. And what's happening is, of course, they're buying low and flipping mobile homes and moving more people in. Some of them are younger, but we have the initial people that have been there for ages, and they're in their eighties and even pushing nineties. We find that since they're on a fixed income, back way before the COVID, myself and Marlene were asked if we would go ahead. We were working at a food bank where we went to the, the food bank and distributed things. They asked if we could go ahead and establish one in our mobile home park on like Tuesdays and the second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday. And so we have been doing that. Even during COVID, we'd go down, pick up the food, bring it down, and open our vehicles and go to the different homes. The thing that, and we've had another group of people that have been going ahead and supplying us with good, healthy, every, everything you can imagine as far as food supplements and things for the people in the park. I was informed this month that at the end of this month, they were going to not allow us to go ahead and do this any longer in the park. No special reason. We asked them for it in writing because we understand that that's something that they're obligated to do, is to tell us in writing what our problem is. We've got certified food handlers. We've gone ahead, taken the course, taken the test, gotten certified, so that it's not something that we're just doing with a bunch of volunteers that want to come on out and help. In conjunction with that, we've had a lot of the things that have happened this last year. We do not, they're not allowing us to do any Christmas parties in the clubhouse anymore, or Thanksgiving, or Fourth of July things. I'm not exactly sure who is spearheading this thing, but it's for senior citizens, low-income people that can't get in their cars and drive. Somebody had said, oh, there's two hundred food places that you can go and pick up food. Well, you know, you sit in a line if you've got a car or if you hang and catch a ride. And there are not that many. They have been downsized dramatically through feeding San Diego, and that's kind of one of our primary supplements that we basically started with. And I just feel it behooves me to go ahead and say something in front of, you know, we care about these people, and we don't get paid for it. We don't go out and beat the street and ask for donations or anything like that. It's out of loving, caring people that they're supplying these people in our park with this, this privilege to have this stuff. I don't know what anybody can do about this situation, but I felt that I needed to go ahead and make, make it apparent that this is what's going on. They've raised the rent every month, and it's supposed to be a fixed income and fixed rent mobile home park. And none of the money that I can see has basically gone back into benefit the infrastructure, which is really old, and to help the people that are buying in to the mobile home. We don't own the property underneath our, our homes, and they expect us to go ahead and upgrade it to their benefit. So it's not like a win-win deal to me. It's more like a, if you don't like it, move out. But this is how it's set up now. Marlene's got a lot of paperwork where we'd keep a paper trail on anybody that comes in and gets the things. So if there is a recall on anything, it's done professionally, and we can make sure that nobody has any problems. But we have not had any incidents or any problems whatsoever since way before COVID. So anyway, anything that can be helped, I guess?
Thank you for coming, Lynn. We, we can't discuss this in any detail at all whatsoever because it's not an agendized item. What I will do is have staff look into the, the things that we can control or that we have some control over. I don't believe that it, being that it's private property, private streets, that we would have any jurisdiction over that. However, when it comes to the rents, we will look into figuring out how we can find out what's, what's happening.
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is Marlene Walder.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members and staff. As you have just heard, today, first, I just want to address one thing quickly, and that is the windows. I went to the HOA meeting, and the president said, oh, they're going to fix the three broken windows. And I said, what about my windows that were to be replaced and fixed? Oh, you're not on it. You have to go through the channels. I've been doing this for ten years and have put in every year a request to get my window fixed, and it hasn't. Okay, this is just from today, the people who came through the food bank, who signed a petition saying they want it to continue. I have sixty signatures on here, not quite, but almost sixty signatures. I didn't get people who come later or didn't show up during the time I was there. This is the paper trail she was talking about. This is from one day, and it is, or the one week, and that's a hundred people who have signed in and picked up food. And sometimes they're signing in for a neighbor that they're picking up for because the neighbors don't all drive. They keep changing the rules and the regulations. I was told about it, and I asked Julie, the manager, if that's the case, I would like something in writing. And she says, I will not give you anything in writing. But the blue books that you all have, the fourth paragraph on that front page is what they put into the bulletin. And I get calls because, I have a big mouth, people always feel I know what's going on in the park. The other page is just showing you what has happened, a calendar, and on the next, the fourth paragraph on the blue one is highlighted in yellow, and that's what the park wrote. That's from the park, those bulletins. That's not anything we submit. So then she said, oh, that's not worded correctly. Well, if you read the wording on it, it says that you're not going to have any more Christmas parties, parties in general. If you look at last year's calendar, there's only three things on it this year. And the reason is they took the swimming pool classes out of the calendar because that's a liability to them if it's on the calendar. She said, next month, the food bank will be off of the calendar also because they don't want the liability. I have a feeling they're working their way to say, okay, we'll let you have your activities back if you pay the higher rent. I'm sorry to say the HOA president said in the last meeting that I went to that, oh, they could be eight percent, and we'll just say we'll take six percent. What happened to our two and three percent that we used to have? One of the ladies came today, and she said, I'm really upset. I moved here because I could afford the rent. And since I've moved here, every year, instead of the six dollars or twelve dollars that I've been having, she started out, she's lived there seventeen years. She said, they have priced me out now. And if they're going to do thirty-five to fifty dollars for most of us, we can't afford to stay here, but where can I go? She's younger than I am, and it's true. Where can we go when they keep doing this for rent? And then the people who bought the flipped houses, they may have a little more money. They needed walls, and they started to put the walls in themselves and pay for it. They look gorgeous, but they don't own the land. And when they move out, they can't take the bricks or anything else. Once you put it in, it becomes part of the package of the owner. And we have four people who have done it in the last month because the park refused to do it, and the walls were coming down because the gophers are so much. But I'm still annoyed about my windows. Anyway, thank you. And I know you can't talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. We will direct staff, though, to get back to you on the rent control ordinance and make sure that that is being followed properly. Okay, moving on to new business, we have appointments to city boards, committees, and commissions. So if the city council would indulge me, I'd like to go out of order and start because we do have some kids here this evening. I think for the youth commission? Are any of our youth commissioner applicants here? Yes, okay, there, we've got one. So just, you probably have homework, so we want to get you on your way. So I'm going to take the youth commission first. So we have one alternate position open, and you are Sophia, I'm assuming. Sophia Skolik. Okay, if you'd like to come up and tell us why you'd like to get involved and serve our city.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on my qualifications for the youth commission. My name is Sophia Skolik, and I am currently a junior at San Marcos High School. I have lived in San Marcos for over ten years, and I am heavily involved in the award-winning marching and concert band programs at SMHS. I have a passion for playing music and learning to play a variety of percussion instruments along with the upright bass. I'm a part of the leadership program in band where I mentor younger band members and seek to be a positive role model for those I come in contact with. I participate in other on-campus academic and extracurricular activities, such as the No Place for Hate Club, where I seek connections with other students. I believe the youth commission is a great program that I would be honored to be a part of. I believe I can contribute to the youth commission with my leadership skills, creative ideas, and knowledge to help engage other San Marcos youth community members. I have a passion for empathy, team building, and gaining experiences with others. Thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Sophia. Good job, Sophia. I'm not sure if Harshini Subramanian is here this evening? No? Okay, well, Harshini is not here this evening, so how about this? How about I nominate Sophia Skolik as the new alternate, which was, and normally, for the folks out in the audience, we don't normally have youth commissioner times that come up during January, but this year we had someone resign, and so that's why we are actually seeing that today. So anyway, that would be my nomination, Sophia Skolik, as the alternate for the youth commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay. Congratulations, Sophia. And if you have homework, you get to leave now.
Unfortunately, her ride is here.
Oh, no.
It's to the end of the meeting.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Okay, that's not good. Sorry, Sophia. I thought I was doing you a favor. Okay, and I, I would like to mention this evening, it's very important, even if you are an alternate for all of the commissions, to make sure that you show up. You never know when there might be a commissioner that needs to leave early or doesn't show up at the last minute, has car trouble. There are many reasons why people can't come at the last minute. So being prepared is really important, but then also showing up too. So as I've heard before, suit up and show up. I think that's really very important, and we do appreciate that. The other thing is, some of our commissioners have applied for other commissions, which we like to move people around if they're, if they're willing to do that. That's always a good thing as well. But we really do like people to be there, present, and then also, you know, prepared to go. So I hope we'll be seeing you at the, the youth commission meetings. Okay, I would like to also take next the Climate Action Plan Working Group, which is a two-year term. We have one regular position open, and we have one applicant that is reapplying, and that is Rebecca Roseller. Are you here this? Hi, Rebecca. Come on down. Have you been having fun and enjoying being on that commission?
Absolutely. It's been such a great experience. So thank you for letting me reintroduce my qualifications for the position. So good evening, city council and Mayor Jones, fellows, or city staff and fellow residents. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I wanted to just say I'm a lifelong North County resident. I'm also a lifelong, I would say, advocate for the environment that has really driven my decisions, my personal decisions, as far as doing things like composting and driving a hybrid car and focusing on what I purchase, making wise purchasing decisions. It also, living in San Marcos, I enjoy the parks, the trails, the ridge ordinance that keeps us, keeps that environment in front of mind. Last time I applied for the commission, I was in the middle of my master's program, which was in resilient and sustainable communities. which was in resilient and sustainable communities. And during that time, I took coursework in energy and the environment and climate change, understanding climate change, and it just really encouraged me to step into the role as part of the working group. And so I, like I said, I really enjoyed hearing the updates from the staff members and also engaging and asking questions and being a representative for residents to further push the city along in their, their decisions. So being engaged locally is important to me. I work for a global nonprofit where I'm the communication director, and we continue to hear news from around the world of residents in India who are living through heat waves and rainstorms in Kenya and flooding in Malawi. And it's these local decisions that are going to make a difference. So all of us working together will make the world a more sustainable place. And so it has been an honor again to sit on the CAP Working Group, and I will look forward to serving again if appointed. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. And I would like to make a motion to nominate Rebecca as the representative on the Climate Action Plan Working Group. I'm sorry. Yeah, Working Group. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Okay, unanimous approval. Congratulations, Rebecca. Okay. Oh, one thing I did want to mention, Rebecca also has a perfect attendance. Five for five. That's a really big thing for me. So thank you so much for showing up and making sure that happens. Appreciate that. Now let's give her a little applause. Okay, moving on to our third commission, which I'm also taking out of order, is going to be the Community Foundation. So we have two regular positions open, and we have Carol Gandel. If you'd like to come down and tell us if you're enjoying yourself on that commission?
I am having more fun than I can possibly stand.
Okay, well, that's always good.
Mayor Jones and councilors, thank you for this opportunity to appear and tell you why I'm asking to be reappointed to San Marcos Community Foundation. I've had the privilege of serving on the foundation for two terms since May of 2019. And since our dynamic leader, Colleen Lukoff, has decided to step down after many years of dedicated service, I'm the member with most seniority on the board. All of our other members are currently in their first year of their first term. During the challenging COVID years, we could not visit potential grantees on site, and the grants, and the requests for grants grew both in numbers of grantees and the size of the grants, far exceeding the resources we currently can allocate each quarter. In the last four years, our average total quarterly dollar amount requested has grown to close to $90,000. But we can only grant somewhere around $12,000 to $16,000 a quarter. So our grant review process requires a great deal of deliberation and often means contacting the applicants for additional information. We take this responsibility very seriously. For a few years, we've been discussing the need to create a strategic plan to help us build our endowment fund. This past year, we were privileged to receive a grant to work with the Cal State San Marcos Business School Senior Experience Program. President Lukoff and one of our advisory board members met with the student team regularly for five weeks and developed a roadmap for us to use, which our current board is very excited about putting into effect going forward. Part of this plan is focused on increasing our visibility to the community, working with financial planners, and connecting with potential donors so we can make more and larger grants. One of the challenges we've struggled with over the last few years has been the continuous turnover of committee members. I'm excited that our current board members are all committed to this unique city commission. And we are also fortunate to have a strong city staff support team led by Phil Skolik that has been working to make the application process simpler for our grantees and to also make the donation process easier and more transparent for potential donors. I hope you'll reappoint me so we can implement the very promising strategic plan created by the senior experience team and allow me to continue to serve our community and the many amazing nonprofit organizations, large and small, that do so much to serve our San Marcos residents. It is an honor to learn about all of the organizations that make our community better. So that is why I'm hoping that I can serve another term. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is Robert Crane, followed by, well, actually Rebecca, since we just appointed you, we're good, right? Okay. So after Bob Crane, we'll be Sam Newhauser. So Bob, if you could come down and talk about yourself a little bit, that'd be great.
Mayor Jones, City Council. I've been a longtime resident of the city of San Marcos since 1999, actually, and a community volunteer in a lot of different aspects. I was a coach, youth coach. I was one of the founding members of the Youth Sports Council, former Parks and Rec Commissioner, and I've been on the Planning Commission for quite a long time, actually for about eight years now. First as an alternate and now as a regular. In fact, I was the vice chair also at one point in time. I am interested in serving in whatever capacity the city would like me to serve in. I prefer city, the Planning Commission, as I'm a licensed real estate broker, and that's kind of my wheelhouse. So, but like I said, I've been a community volunteer in a lot of different things in schools, three different schools. I have four kids. So youth sports. So whatever you guys feel is a good fit for me, I'd be more than happy to do. And I can actually do more than one thing, too.
Okay.
Be a business owner.
Okay. I keep forgetting to ask anybody if you have any questions of the applicants. Sorry. Any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. My name is Sam Newhauser. I am a former Marine and firefighter. I've been a resident here of San Marcos for a little over eight years now. Currently work here in San Marcos. I was a business owner here in San Marcos for six-plus years and work at Palomar College as adjunct faculty at the Fire Academy. I am a regional manager for a large national veteran service organization. And my company that I had here in San Marcos, we did a lot of advisory and consulting services for nonprofits, both locally here in San Diego as well as across country. So I'm just asking for your consideration to support the Community Foundation and any other commissions that you see fit.
Okay. Any questions of Sam? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Sam. Appreciate it. Okay. I would like to nominate Carol Gandel as a regular position. Oh, I'm like, wait, did she leave? Now she's here. And then I would like to nominate Bob Crane as a regular position for the two regular positions. So that would be my motion for Carol and then Bob as the two regular positions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Okay. Congratulations, you two. And hopefully, we, and by the way, Carol, you had a perfect attendance record. I forgot to mention that as well. We appreciate that. Okay, so even if you're an alternate, we'd appreciate if you can show up to everything. So moving on to Budget Review Committee. That would be one regular and one alternate position. We have Benjamin Barlow as a first applicant and then Momo Savovic as a second. Benjamin, are you here this evening? No? Okay.
Hi, everybody. Mayor Jones and honorable council members. I've been resident of San Marcos for 25 years now, and I've been serving on various commissions, including Traffic Commission. Right now, I'm helping as, I think I'm a member of Community Outreach Commission, and I thought I could be assisting on some other possible openings and assisting city. In my resume, I'm California Lead for a company called Kimley Horn. We're about $3 billion business, and I'm developing that business further. Also, I am volunteering on various associations, primarily Engineering Association. I'm past president of Construction Management Association of America and also California Water and Environment Association. I thought I would be helpful on Planning Commission, and I was trying to get nominated for a number of years. And of course, if there is opportunity to assist in that capacity, I would appreciate very much. My background and experience may help city that's growing at the pace that city of San Marcos is. So however, I will, I'll be willing to help in any capacity that you find useful and fitting for my talents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Momo. And then we have also, you're actually on another commission on the Community Foundation. I just wanted to make a mention of that. And Sam, I, we had a discussion at one point in time. You had mentioned to me Budget Review Committee. Just give me a nod if that, okay. Okay, so what I think I'd like to do, and Benjamin's not here this evening, I think I'd like to nominate Sam Newhauser as the regular position and then Ben Barlow as an alternate on the Budget Review Committee. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. So even if you're an alternate, if we could let Ben know that we want him to show up, and hopefully he can do that. Moving on to Parks and Rec, we have two regular positions open. That would be Travis Lindsay and Sasha Smith. If you could please come up in that order. Travis Lindsay, you're up first. And are you having fun? Because Parks and Rec is supposed to be the fun, the fun group.
I am having fun. We have a great time. And I would say over the years, we've accomplished a lot. We, I mean, the city, the city staff in particular, our volunteers, and certainly the work of the commission. But there's certainly a lot more to be done. For me personally, the, some of the priorities that I see that we need to address are while we have a wonderful trail system that we've built up, we're still lacking some connectivity of those trails. And that is included in that Master Trails Plan, I believe. There are suggestions in there on where we could, what the priorities are of where we should be doing that. The other thing is, it's a pretty well-known fact that we have a shortage of sports fields. That's certainly a constraint in terms of capital expenses for the city, but it seems like there might be some creative ways that we could increase the utilization of our existing fields while we wait to look for opportunities to add fields. And last but not least, our poor two pools are in not great condition and are really in need of complete renovation. And while I realize that there's limitations on resources for the city, that there might be some future opportunities for public-private partnerships to perhaps examine some of, some of those areas. So you're probably all familiar with the San Marcos Parks and Recreation Foundation. I serve there, and we're looking for ways to increase the way that, increase ways we may be able to augment funding for the city. So a lot of challenges out there, but I have had a great time doing this. We're now moving on to our third Parks and Recreation Director. But I think that with us all working hard, we can probably accomplish some more things.
All right, well, thank you. And the reason that we're moving to a third one is not because people haven't, you know, been around very long, it's because you've been around a long time. Let's just get that straight. Okay, thank you very much. And I couldn't agree more with OPM, Other People's Money. Does anyone have any questions of Travis? No? Thank you very much. Sasha, you're up next.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Sasha Smith. I have applied for the reappointment of the Parks and Rec Commission. I have been a commissioner on the commission for about eight years now, eight or nine years. Time's kind of flying by, so it's a little hard to gauge. I really enjoy being part of the commission. I enjoy being able to represent the community. I am a mother of two small children, so I definitely think I am able to represent that demographic and bring that to the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm always at parks and participate a lot in our, all of our city-run events and the recreational classes and things like that. So I definitely kind of have a feeling of what's going on and get some feedback also from my, you know, fellow park moms and things like that. And I'd like to continue to represent the community in that aspect.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of Sasha? No? Okay.
Could I take a moment just to say one quick thing?
Sure, go ahead.
I have, there's a child at my daughter's school who has leukemia, and he's looking for donors. His name is Chase Real, and he's looking for donors that would be in Filipino or white ethnicity. And if anybody has any interest in that, they can text TEAMCHASE to 61474. It is very urgent, so I just wanted to put that out there and spread that with our community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. So Parks and Rec, we have two applicants and we have two regular positions. I would like to, oh, sorry. What? Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Barnett. I'm sorry, I'm not reading this right. Mike Barnett. And then we also have Arturo Rico, followed by Natasha Helms, and then Rebecca Rosler. Oh, but Rebecca, you're, okay. We're good.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council and city staff. As you said, my name is Mike Barnett. I've lived in San Marcos since 1997. My wife Claire and I have raised five children here and have made significant use of the city's recreational and cultural opportunities. My professional experience includes 30 years working in public safety. I was assigned at the San Marcos Sheriff's Station from 1997 to 2001 as a deputy sheriff and returned as the station commander in 2011. In that role, I worked with two prior city managers and the city's leadership team to keep San Marcos one of the safest cities in California. I had the privilege to work with every city in the county following that assignment to provide for regional public safety services, including over three years as the county's undersheriff. Following my retirement from public service, I was asked to serve as the CEO of a local youth services organization, Casa de Amparo, here in San Marcos. What I offer to the city is my dedication to collaboration, to listen to the community as well as city staff and elected leadership so that the community's needs can be supported. It is through positive development, diverse and ample recreation, and good traffic management that San Marcos has distinguished itself as a city dedicated to the well-being of the people who live, work, and learn here. San Marcos is dedicated to helping people discover life's possibilities, and I would be honored to continue my life of service as a commissioner in the city I have called home for 27 years. Thank you for your time and consideration of my application and your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Mike? No? Okay, thank you. Next up is Arturo Rico, followed by Natasha Helms.
Hi, my name's Arturo Rico, and I have served in the Traffic Commission for, I think, more, three terms now. Have enjoyed, enjoyed that experience a great deal, and I think I'm, I, so I probably have my name on Traffic Commission, but I would like to serve wherever the council would see fit for me. I think a few reasons why, what I bring to the table to help here is I'm very dedicated. I think in my over decade of serving with the, with the Traffic Commission, I probably, I've only missed one meeting, and I think it was for, last year for the San Marcos High School graduation. It was just something I couldn't get out of. It was important to the family. So yeah, I think that was the only time. But with that, I think with the, with the Traffic Commission, it's a, it's a great group. I've learned a great deal. I'm very excited about the changes and the improvements that they have, the follow-up that happens in that group. And I think it, whether it's Traffic or Parks and Recreation or whatever commission that I'm on, I feel like it'd be the same experience. So, any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up Natasha Helms.
Hi, my name's Natasha Xander-Hilmes. I know everybody says it wrong, but that's okay. We're used to it. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for this opportunity. It really has been on my to-do list to be on a commission for years, but unfortunately, you know, working and I traveled for work, so I had to put it off. But a little about me, so I am a native San Yegan, born and raised in San Diego, in southeast San Diego. So I've continually moved up to North County and have been in San Marcos for 20 years. Additionally, I've worked all over San Diego and San Diego County and I really love this city and our county. I had a career in banking for over 40 years and the last 20 years in learning and development. I'm currently working for Cal State San Marcos in their extended learning and in their supervisory program and as an instructor, doing effective communication and performance management, just to name a couple of those classes. I'm an avid road cyclist, so I have biked all over San Marcos, all over throughout San Diego and San Diego County. And I've also walked a lot of miles here in town. So I just brought up biking. Yes, I have a lot of ideas about e-bikes and concerns out there because I see them all the time when I'm out there. So traffic is really always on my mind because being a road cyclist, you have to be very attentive. I've been married for 43 years, wow. My husband's a veteran, Navy veteran, and we like to keep active, especially here in town. And, you know, we're lucky we live here in San Marcos because we even get to see cows in the neighboring field, which I think is a big bonus. And luckily, his Navy career kept him in San Diego most of that time. So wrapping it all up together, I really want only what's best for where we live and work here in San Marcos. And I know that communication is very important, teach communication, and I think that makes a difference and I think that's what the commissions need to make sure they're giving that communication out there. I know I want to be safe on the streets, whether I'm biking or walking or driving, and I want everybody else to have that safety too. I am known to be an effective listener and in fact, if my astrological sign says anything, I'm well-balanced and I listen to both sides before jumping in. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity and, you know, if I'm Traffic Commission or whatever, or Parks and Rec, I really appreciate if you would nominate me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, and then Rebecca, we're good. Okay, so we have two regular positions. I would like to nominate Travis Lindsey and then Sasha Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is going to be Traffic Commission. So we have three regular positions open. First up is Arturo, followed by Kirk Erickson, then it will be Brad Pedersen and Natasha. We just heard from you, so you've already spoken, so. And then, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Yep, Arturo, sorry. We don't need you to come back up. Wait, is that right? No, no, we, he hasn't, he hasn't spoken. Oh yeah, he already did speak. Yeah, yeah, he spoke. Gotcha. Got you. Kirk is next, followed by you guys. It's a lot up here. I have papers just everywhere. Followed by Brad Pedersen, Natasha, Natasha's, yes, she just spoke. And then Momo is on something else and then Mike Barnett, we already heard from. Okay, Kirk, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jenkins and council and most importantly, outstanding staff. So I'm here tonight to ask for reappointment to the Traffic Commission. It has been my first term. It's been rather interesting, of course, getting through COVID and managing the meetings through COVID. I'm sure everybody on this dais can respect that. Little bit of background on me, I have had approximately 25 years in public service, starting with the law enforcement and now working my way up into, as a registered nurse in trauma and emergency medicine. So I know the importance, I see it on a daily basis, the effects of traffic safety and the unfortunate outcome of not, not being safe on the roads. So finding that ability and taking my time as a citizen of San Marcos to put my efforts and my input into the process of trying to find safe ways of managing the traffic and making sure that our streets are safe for people living in San Marcos and those who are traveling through San Marcos. And it's been very enlightening, working with Arturo and the rest of the commissioners and approaching those, those rather contentious, sometimes highly-charged topics and neighborhoods as far as managing the traffic. So I would like to continue that and respectfully request consideration for serving another term.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Brad Pedersen.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jenkins, council members and staff. Ladies and gentlemen, behind me. Hello there. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna guarantee I'm, I'm well-balanced. You'll, you'll find that out later on. My name is Brad Peterson and I'm asking to be reappointed to the Traffic Commission. First little bit of background, I was born in Los Angeles. My folks moved to Escondido when I was 12. I spent most of my childhood there and I moved and made a purchase here in San Marcos about 25 years ago. And by the way, and, and yes, I vote to. I'm gonna skip over probably about half of this. Kind of update, I recently retired, retired from the San Marcos Unified School District. I spent the last 26 years as a school bus driver. Henceforth, maybe that's the balance. But I've learned a lot. Drove out of every school, public and private. Schools I never knew that were there in the first place, many schools out of district. And I do consider traffic my wheelhouse. Been doing it for a long time. Accident-free, thank the Lord for that. As I mentioned, I have been on the Traffic Commission before and a couple of things I've learned is that I realized from staff, being taught from staff, why we don't have speed bumps and stop signs at every intersection. We're good, we're good. I also realized something called traffic guidelines I had learned about. I was mistaken about those. I thought they were more or less suggestions. I found out they're more or less, and more like commandments. So I'll shunt, I'll go there. I was, as, I've served several terms on the Commission. I've been elected Vice Chair and Chairman several times over. One of the things I've always tried to do, and I've heard it already tonight, which is, which is very encouraging, I tried to build a coalition amongst the Commissioners because we're coming from different points of view, different walks of life, and that's great. I just, I just, I just really focused on trying to have everybody have a say-so. Everybody gets listened to whether we agree or disagree and that's okay. When people came to the Commission with their concerns, with their complaints and occasionally some hostility, the Commission tried to do the same thing. We want to work with people. Sometimes, as a bus driver, I was a part of our union. Sometimes just listening to people, finding what the concern's about can go a long way instead of just putting up a wall. And I'll just, I'll just skip over that. If I could throw in two last, two comments, not dealing with, with myself or the Commission. Number one, naming the Villa Veracruz after Pia Harris Ebert. Kudos, it's a class act for a classy lady. And I don't know if you guys have made a decision about the future fire department. If I can make some directional suggestions, Las Poses. I'll be selfish and say that's my neighborhood, okay? There's a lot of property, be it on the corner of Las Poses and Mission, go a little further down to Linda Vista, there's lots of acreage out there, plenty of room and we give the fire department plenty of, plenty, plenty of time, plenty of space to try to get to where they need to get to within, you know, three, four, or five minutes. Anyway, I'm better at sitting on that side and taking questions than trying to read because I don't talk about myself very well. So any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you so much, Brad. Appreciate you coming this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Traffic Commission, we have, we've heard from everyone else, three regular positions open, but I'd like to throw a curveball out there this evening. Sorry, Phil, I saw how you looked at me. So I'd like to move up one of our alternates, Ian Clark, to a regular position. So that would give us two more regular positions and then one alternate position, if I'm counting correctly. Okay, so I would like to nominate, so these will be my nominations. Kirk Erickson for a regular position, Ian Clark for a regular position, so that opens up an extra alternate position, Natasha. I actually wrote down how to, Hilmes. Hilmes. Okay, Hilmes. I wrote that down because I didn't want to offend you. I hate it when I say someone's name wrong. As the regular and then Brad Pedersen as alternate. So I'll go through it one more time. Moving up, Ian Clark from an alternate to a regular, so we have one extra alternate position, Kirk Erickson as a regular position, Natasha.
Hilmes.
Hilmes. Hilmes. Sorry, I should have written it on this one. And as a regular position and then Brad Pedersen as an alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay. And if you don't, if you, we really want you to show up if you're an alternate as well. Okay, so that should just leave Planning Commission, if I'm correct. And we have several openings on that, well, three openings or four openings on that and then we have several applicants. So, but many of them have already spoke. So we've heard from Bob Crane. Kevin Norris will be first speaking, then Fatima, Fatima Rios Perez will be next, followed by Steve Kildue. Okay, Kevin Norris, please come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. So my name's Kevin Norris. I'm reapplying for the Planning Commission. I've been on the Commission for a number of years and the reason why I'm applying, reapplying is to keep continuity on the Commission. There's a lot of projects, well, that we have to really dig into. I understand CEQA, the Environmental Impact Report, just going over that, making sure. We have a really good planning department, as you all know, so they really bring some good projects to us. So I just, we have the general plan as well coming up. So I'd like to be able to be part of that, continue what I've been doing so far. I know a lot of Commissioners, they have their, we have their own strengths, some with real estate, some with finance, some with architecture. So my background is mainly utilities and infrastructure, so I'd like to keep that going. When I was, for, it took a while for me to get the EV charging infrastructure going on, on the projects. A lot of it was missed or not actually looked at. And so now they're actually coming up on, on the projects and saying, this is where the EV charging is going, this is what we're going to do. And I know a couple of years ago, you asked me about the hydrogen, to get hydrogen in the city. So there was a project at the corner of Mission and Las Poses, gas station that was going in and through conversation with the applicant and his attorney, they were actually willing to do a DC fast charger instead of the typical level two for a gas station, it makes sense. And sensitive than he thought it would be. So I think if we just keep pushing that, that number, I think that can happen. There are some grants out there too that we can, we can talk about. Other stuff, I like the meetings with Joe. I come in early and meet with Joe. Like I said, I really appreciate our planning department. My job as Associate Engineer at UC San Diego is the new construction that we're doing down there, so specifications, guidelines, plan review, even CEQA docs. We do our own CEQUAs. So it works hand-in-hand with what I'm doing here. I love the city. I've been here for 25 years and, you know, I'm just interested in the growth. Another thing I talked about at our last meeting was connectivity. So the projects that we're doing, we're doing one here, we're doing one here, but there's no connectivity from one project to the next. So the Marcos project was a beautiful project. We need, I love that, if we can do some more of that. It gets people in the city out and celebrating and doing things. There's places for them to do that. But the latest one, Restaurant Row, there's no connectivity. If you want to go over there for an event, you jump in your car and drive over. So if the master plan, can we, if we can look at that and just have connect, to be able to connect the dots, that's what we're doing on the campus. It takes time, it takes years. Each project can have their own. So there's just issues that are not finished on my behalf that I'd like to continue to do on the Commission. And then one more thing I'd like to ask for, and it's just going out there, is if the appointments were longer than two years, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions of Kevin? Okay, Fatima Rios Perez, followed by Steve Kildue.
Happy New Year, Mayor Jones and City Council Members. My name is Fatima Rios. I'm a first-generation college graduate with a Master's in Public Administration who finds city planning fascinating. My family and I call, have been calling San Marcos home since the early 2000s when we migrated from Mexico. I've been on the Planning Commission for the past two, three years and have seen the city grow with my involvement in the city's GPAC Committee with CSU San Marcos and various other youth programs. I value the opportunity to participate in our local government as a liaison between our development decisions and our residents, both listening to our neighbors and complying with state and federal mandates. In my profession, I mitigate and analyze risk and safety concerns for the city of Encinitas, many of which revolve around planning and engineering. Moving forward as a Planning Commissioner, I'd like to contribute to the implementation of voluntary applicant incentives to include more affordable housing in the city of San Marcos. And this would also target our new housing city goals. With your reappointment, I can continue to support and represent San Marcos residents who are English learners, low-income and first-generation college students in my District One and citywide. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? I did want to say one thing. Our policy on affordable housing, and we actually have about 7% of our total housing stock is deed-restricted affordable, is to pay an in lieu fee if you cannot build it on-site, which sometimes helps us leverage funds to actually build more affordable housing. And since we have more than almost every city in the county per, you know, total housing stock number of percentages, that, I think we've done a very good job of that. Since I've been on the council, I think we've built like 1,100 units. I mean, a lot, really. Although today, oh, by the way, today's my 17th year anniversary of finishing 17 years on the City Council, which is kind of exciting. But anyway, we've, we've done a lot in the 17 years that I've been on the council. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that while we were discussing that. Next up will be Steve Kildue. And one other thing that I would like to say, and this goes for you too, Steve, is that all of our Planning Commissioners, some of these, these, these things that are coming forward, development, are very complicated and we want to make sure that everyone takes the time, because I know that city staff wants to do them, to have a briefing so that you're prepared. And I did talk that a little, I talked about that a little bit earlier in, in the meeting and I think it's And I think it's really important, if you're going to, you know, apply for the Planning Commission, it's very important that you take that time and, and really show up prepared by not only just reading the material, but also having a discussion with staff so that they are able to bring you up to speed on all of the projects. So, anyway, with that, putting no pressure on you, of course.
No, no pressure, of course.
Go right ahead.
Mayor Jones, council members, most of you know me. Most of you know I have a lot of time in service with the city. I've absolutely enjoyed it. I stepped away from some of that as I moved into the lake, but I have since moved back out and joined the light, back into the city of San Marcos. And I would love to get back to the service that I've spent a good chunk of my adult life doing. I spent a lot of years on traffic and then a lot of years on the Planning Commission. I was also on the University District Task Force. I currently still chair the Creek District Task Force, if we can ever get back on track. And would love to take the expertise that the Creek project kind of forced on us with mixed use and use that to help the city as it grows and, and needs to look at other projects that are more complicated, because that's what's left. If it was an easy project to build, it'd already be built. So, what's left is the hardest ones and the greatest amount of expertise at every level, whether it's traffic or planning, is in the best interest of the city. I would love to be part of that. I feel like I've got more to offer and would love to be part.
Great. Okay, thank you so much, Steve. Any questions? No? Okay. All right, I have another curveball I'd like to throw, everyone. So, we do have an alternate that I would like to move up, which if we do that, then we have three regular and two alternates, correct? Yes. Okay. I'm just waiting for the nod. Okay, so I would like to move up Lionel Salisbury as a regular position. And then I would like to nominate Kevin Norris, Fatima, and then Mike Barnett. So, that would be four regular positions. Kevin Norris, Fatima, Lionel Salisbury, who is an alternate, so moving him up. And then Mike Barnett as a regular position as well. And then as alternates, that would be Steve Kildue and Arturo Rico. So, do you guys want to vote on these individually or would you like to vote all together? Because my motion is all together. It's just a lot. I just want to make sure you guys are fully on, I'll, I'll just say it one more time. Kevin Norris, Fatima, Lionel, Mike Barnett as regular positions, and then Steve Kildue and Arturo Rico as the two alternates.
Does that pencil out, Phil?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was looking at, I was looking at five open positions, but I think we called out six names.
Because we're moving an alternate up, so that takes one of the regular positions, bringing it down to three, and then creating an extra alternate.
Second alternate, okay.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I'm going to say it just one more time. Sorry to sound like a scolding mother. However, really want to make sure that our Planning Commission comes to the, the meetings prepared by having a staff presentation or meeting so that you're all on board, so that you're ready to make those complicated decisions and you're fully informed. So, that being said, that would be, oh, sorry. Yes, sure. Go right ahead.
Also, when, I think that's a good idea about the briefings. I might add, Phil, when you next do the Planning Commission table that we work from, whenever that is in the future, could you add a column for the briefing attendance in addition to the meeting attendance? Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right. Moving on to oral communications, do we have any speaker slips? No? Okay. No further speakers. Moving on to reports. Sandag, we have not met, so we will be meeting, wait, did we, yeah, we didn't meet since our last meeting, did we?
No, Friday.
But we're meeting on Friday. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
Yes. So, we had a Zoom meeting on the 8th, introducing new members and some returning representatives. Ben Trefo, who was the Cal Cities lobbyist, he discussed a lot of the ballot measures coming up in November regarding taxes. Some of the, some of them are in conflict, depending on how the votes go. One may cancel out the other. One may cancel out not just the current status, but going back to January of 2022. So, I would just say it's very important when you get your ballots, if you vote, look at them carefully, do your research. Sometimes the, the way the label could be, if not misleading, then it should pique your curiosity as to what exactly is entailed. We did talk about some of the budget shortfalls for the state. These are in billions of dollars. We have 311.7 in the 2324 expenditure list, which runs a $31.7 billion deficit. However, we have $37.8 billion in budget reserves. And at this point, it appears that the governor is intent on pulling enough out of the reserves to cover that shortfall, which would leave us $6 billion in reserve. But one of the things that the league is going to be pressing the state legislature on, and I'm quoting Ben Trefo, is don't claw, don't claw back monies due to local government to fill gaps in state operating budgets, which I think we can all support.
I think definitely. But I want you to say that number one more time. What the deficit, or not the deficit, but if we don't pull out of reserves, what is that number again?
We would be 31, roughly $31.5 billion in the red.
And so, we pull out of the general fund and then there, I'm sorry, the reserves, and we're left with $6 billion?
$6 billion out of the current reserve of 37.
Right.
I'm sorry, yeah, 37.
Yeah, yeah, that would make sense because, so anyway, that is, that's a little staggering.
And that, that will be coming up to the Senate and Assembly here very shortly for consideration, for appropriations.
Do you have the total number of the budget?
Well, the 2324 budget is 311.7. I don't have the current 2425.
That's okay.
That'll be coming up. I'm sure.
$6 billion of reserves.
That's huge. That's, that's, well, considering we have 37 now, we're going to drop that down by roughly 80%. That's pretty significant.
Yeah. I just wanted to make mention of that. Okay. Moving on to North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, we met December 21st. Seems like forever. And I actually have a few things to share with everybody. We did appoint our new CEO. His name is Sean Donahue, if I got that right. He is currently the CEO or chief, yeah, CEO at C-Trans in Vancouver, Washington. And he will be starting on March 1st. That was about a four-month process to get that accomplished. And so, we're excited that he'll be coming on board. We also recognize two employees who had been there over 30 years. And then I want to give a service update. That's been a big issue for the past couple of years. We plan, so our next service change will be coming up in the spring. And we will be, we have a couple of different things going on here. We will be 100% back restoring full service in June of '24. All services and routes that had been disrupted due to COVID and then our lack of being able to get bus drivers has been resolved. One of the things that I reported on probably a couple of months ago is that MTS is going to be notified us that they are going to be discontinuing their service they provide at one of the busier locations, and that's the Sorento Valley Coaster Connection. And so, North County Transit is coming up with a plan so that we will be able to continue to provide that transportation down there. Nothing is final yet, but we will be, hopefully by, let me see if I can give you the date. Hopefully by also June of '24, we will be able to resolve that situation for San Diego. And then the big thing that's near and dear to San Marcos is our, what we've talked about for several years, is our micro-transit. And it, in the past, it's been talked about as a shuttle, but it's going to be a micro-transit type opportunity for us. There are, I want to highlight a few things to make sure that I cover this. So, there are 14 zones that are being looked at. And they will be piloting in probably one or two zones. We have a good chance, there's nothing definite yet. We've established the policy to come up with how the zones will be evaluated. And we have a good possibility of being considered because of our colleges in town. So, that will be decided, let me tell you when that is, in. The pilots are going to launch in June, and we're hoping to be able to maybe do two of them. Again, this will be a micro-transit type situation. I don't, some of you will remember, we had a Carlsbad connector a few years ago before COVID. And so, it'll be something along those lines, some sort of mini van possibly type situation. It will be an on-call type service. It's not going to be driving around town. Couple of things, questions that came up during the, the last meeting. There's no defined timeframe as far as how long the pilot will run yet. It is important to have density in the area, which, which we have definitely with, with our college traffic. And then initially, the cities will not have to contribute funds upfront. They're going to have grant funding for that. And so, basically, it'll, grant funding will be coming out of our general fund, but there's grant opportunities. And something else that we talked about for, for cities and entities in the county to think about is this possibility of micro-transit might have an impact on our cap in the various areas. If they can, developers might be able to help use this sort of thing to meet some of their VMT requirements, or cities might be able to use it too. So, we're going to look at what those possibilities might look like to see if we can somehow enhance some of those services. There's nothing definite on that. But it is going to be piloted and we'll know in a couple of months or so which zones are going to be decided and if it'll be one or two. So, we're getting close.
So, do we have like a map? Are you going to come back and let us know what those zones are when, when that's actually?
There are 14 of them. Hold on here. Carlsbad Village, Carlsbad Point Setia, San Marcos, Buena Creek, Vista, Encinitas, Oceanside, Eastern Core, Fallbrook in the Pala area, Escondido South, Escondido North. Another area in Oceanside, Solana Del Mar, Santa Lejo, and then Sorento Valley East.
Okay.
So, we'll keep our fingers crossed that San Marcos maybe will be one of them.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that.
Real quickly, the Escondido North, is that the transit center or is it further north from there?
I don't think I can answer that.
I know there was some discussion about that transit center being the lot, the, the pretty extensive parking lot being converted to housing. Is that still on the table?
The, the development? Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, that's moving forward.
So, most of that parking is going away?
Well, that's all still moving forward.
Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, there's 14 zones and then staff will be deciding based on the criteria which zones will be piloted. It's not a long-term fix, but we'll see if people use it. If people don't use it, then it won't be able to continue.
Got it.
And then another thing, any other questions about that?
No.
Okay. Another thing, we had a report on, on our grants that we've received. Our staff brought in about $250 million last year for projects. We have about, let me just still, we still have about a billion dollars of needed funds. So, they continue to always be looking for funds and with our partners. The thing that's of most important to us is the Sprinter corridor. And there is a priority project eventually to double-track the Sprinter and improve the signal. So, that is of interest, significant interest to us here. We have about 9.5 miles to double-track. That currently does not include the loop, just to make that clear. They are looking for some funds to include the loop on that double-tracking, but it's not there yet. And then they want to modernize the signals. So, that's the one that's most critical for San Marcos. And if we can double-track then, and get the appropriate funds, then the Sprinter frequency will increase.
I, I do have one question. I forgot. On NCTD, the drivers, are they in-house? Were they brought back in-house or are they still being subbed out?
We're in the process of bringing all of our couple of contracts back in-house.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Curious about that. Thanks. Okay, moving on to North County Dispatch, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is scheduled to take place February 28th, so next month.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet later this month, Mayor.
Okay. City Council Business Visit, Black Hat Bread. Black Hat Bread makes naturally leavened sourdough bread using organic ingredients. Look how delicious it looks. So, they use organic ingredients and they have a long fermentation process for the best taste possible. And I can attest to the fact that it is delicious. There is a Councilmember Musgrove eating some.
A very small sample.
It was a big sample. What do you, don't, don't say that. Anyway, the owner is Terry Ellis. He was doing something else. I'm trying to remember what it was.
He's a rocket scientist.
That's right, a rocket scientist. And of course, it makes sense for him to become then, you know, a breadmaker. So, anyway, he lives over kind of near the area, which is over off of Norman, Norman Strauss, right there off of Bostic. Did you want to share some more details, Councilmember?
He has some, it's just him right now. He has some folks that come in and help. And his operation, my God, there's nothing in here I could compare it, so small.
And clean.
The room itself, extremely clean. He has some industrial-sized ovens that he was able to procure from businesses that were closing up. So, he's, he's got some very nice ovens. And he's starting to build up a clientele. You probably won't see it at the grocery store, but as an example, the Golden Door, where they have the roadside stand across from Terry, they sell his breads there. They use it at the spa itself. And he's reaching out to some of our local restaurants. And I know Tess, our economic development is kind of helping to coordinate some of those introductions, because he can accommodate a reasonable amount of work. It's not boudin. He can't do 5,000 loaves a day and, and serve you soup. But he's very, very interested in keeping the artisan aspect of his craft. He's not into volume. He wants it to be good quality bread, no preservatives. So, what you get is fantastic and it's, it's, it's a real treasure if you have the opportunity to find some of his bread in town.
And at the store, the Golden Door Store, Country Store, it's Tuesday through Sunday. It opens at 10:00. And I think he said it's routinely sold out by noon?
Yep.
Yeah. So, if you like that bread and you want to go get it, you have to go early. You should be there right at 10:00 when they open, because otherwise you might lose out. But it, it was delicious. It was really, really good. So, anything else to add?
A very enjoyable visit.
And now we have the San Marcos Creek Project, which by the way, did open up. If you haven't been over in that area, but maybe we'll get an update us to the finishing touches that are continuing.
Yes, finishing touches are underway. We are this week paving, doing the final paving and striping of Bent Avenue, which means we'll have about two days when Bent will be closed to finish that up. And then we focus on the park. Lots of planting going on. We're going to put in the park infrastructure and that's the cherry on the top.
Okay. And right now, did we finish Bent yet? Because there still are some, there were some high manholes, so you need to be careful with your car. with your car when you're driving around them.
Yes, that's the paving piece that we're completing this week.
Yay, this week, this week, next week it'll be safe. Uh, there won't be anything you have to dodge, but definitely, uh, when you're in the area right now, make sure you, uh, drive carefully. Okay, yes. Sure.
Quick question, Michelle. At what point do, do the traffic lights become more synchronized than they are now? Because there's a few areas, uh, by Ralph's that aren't synchronized quite right, but they have to wait a certain amount of time for the traffic to flow, I'm guessing? Do we know?
Yes, the way, um, Isaac has painstakingly explained it to me, because we've had a couple of these questions, um, that traffic flow is going to evolve over time. So we're constantly monitoring it, trying to bring them online. We had one or two traffic lights that weren't immediately activated and the, um, consultant was working on those. So you're going to start to see that flow improving over time, but everybody's behavior is going to adapt once they figure out that there's a, a clean flow going through there. So, um, our traffic management system and our traffic engineer, Damian, are going to be monitoring that and continuing to update it to make sure that eventually we have a really clean flow going through there.
Okay, I think that's confusing to people, thinking that that's how it's going to be, but it is going to change.
It, it's going to change, yes. I was stopped at that light for a little bit, making note, like, oh, we better move this along.
And I think some of them are still just blinking, so red flashing, um, as if the power had gone out. So just be, just bear with us, we, you know, it was a mad rush to get it done by the end of the year, because we really did want to deliver it, because it was four years. But, you know, it's just, uh, we want to make sure when it's all, uh, moving, or when it's all completed 100% uh, with those finishing touches, that it'll be beautiful and just a wonderful thing for our city. But largest capital improvement project in our city's history, by the way, just to remind everyone. Okay, council commentary, does anyone have anything this evening? Well, Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you for being with us on our first meeting of the year, 2024. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.